Good afternoon, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. Every public body shall give notice of the date, time, and location of its meetings, other than special, emergency, or continued meetings at least three working days in advance by posting such notice on its official public government website, if any, placing such notice in a prominent public location at which notices are regularly posted, and placing such notice at the office of the clerk of the public body, or in the case of the public body that has no clerk, at the office of the chief administrator. Reasonable notice under the circumstances of special emergency or continued meeting shall be given contemporaneously with the notice provided to the members of the policy body conducting the meeting. Mrs. Tanner, has today's school board meeting been properly certified?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. On June 27, 2019, and reposted on September 11, 2019. Notice was provided fulfilling all criteria via code Chapter 37.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. I duly call this meeting to order. Okay. Well, welcome, everyone. We have several guests with us today. We're going to go ahead and get started with the first portion of our workshop for today, and that is the discussion of our superintendent search. With us today are two distinguished members of the firm McPherson and Jacobson. We have Dr. Ralph Ferry with us today, and we also have Dr.
Barry Carroll.
Barry Carroll. Carroll with us. Ms. Campson has served as our board liaison in working with the firm. As everyone knows, we've decided on the firm, was it last week?
September 4th.
Two weeks ago. Two weeks ago. And we welcome you to Norfolk. We welcome you to Norfolk Public Schools. We are looking forward to this commitment with you all. And Ms. Campson, if there's anything further that you'd like to add, and then we'll let them get started.
No, let's go right to it.
Okay.
Well, thank you. On behalf of McPherson and Jacobson, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity. We're excited about being here and to help you search for the very best candidate for your school district that you possibly can find. I'll say this right up front before we get started. We don't hire superintendents. You do the hiring, but we are well-rounded in finding excellent candidates for school districts to hire. We've had a great deal of success in our firm. McPherson and Jacobson's been conducting national searches for bodies since 1991. Tom Jacobson, who is our CEO, is an outstanding former superintendent himself, and put this firm together. And the firm has placed over 725 superintendents across the U.S., and is one, I believe, one of the leading national superintendent search firms. McPherson and Jacobson has over 100 consultants. The majority are former superintendents. Dr. Ferry and I both are former superintendents, and we've lived in this world for many years. And so, it's, we know how to connect with educators. We know the characteristics that educators should have, that superintendents should have, and come in and work with you. Organizations who use McPherson and Jacobson, this is kind of one of those flags we like to wave. When you use this protocol, we've found sustainability and leadership. Over the last five years, over 75% of the administrators who have put in positions for which they are hired are still there. And over 50% of the administrators are still in positions for which they were hired within the past 10 years. So, we have a good track record of hiring individuals who go into a district and stay for long periods of time. And as you know, the research says that the longer the superintendent stays, the better the district generally performs. So, we think that's a keystone for us. We think that's something that we can help you with, and I know that's something that you're looking for. I'd like to, before we go any further, I'd like for, excuse me, to introduce myself so everyone knows who I am, and I'll ask Dr. Ferry to do the same thing. But I am Barry Carroll. I live just outside of Huntsville, Alabama. We flew in this morning. Dr. Ferry and I both did. I had 30 years in education, five years as a teacher, five years as an assistant principal, five years as a principal, five years in the central office, and then 10 years as a superintendent, and before I retired and started doing consulting work. I attended Alabama A&amp;M University. It's an HBCU. And played football for Alabama A&amp;M, lived on campus for four years. And that was back in the '70s when that was not very popular. But it was one of the greatest learning experiences of my life, and I'm very proud and happy to say I'm a bulldog. Then I went to the University of Alabama where I earned my master's and doctorate, and then started my teaching career, and as a student in it for over 30 years, and then worked for a couple of educational companies, and then decided I would do some consulting. I've been with McPherson and Jacobson for about a year and a half. I believe in this process. I know it works. And I hope that Dr. Ferry and I both can help you find that person you're looking for. There's more consultants who will be helping with this. We'll talk about that a little bit along the way. I think you have the resumes of Candace, Dr. Fining, Candace Fining, and Dr. Steve Joel. We both know them very well, and they're excellent in helping with searches. So, we as a team will help you find, hopefully, the right person. So, Dr. Ferry?
I didn't fly in from Huntsville. I flew in from Newark. My name is Ralph Ferry. I have been in education for 45 years. Same sort of background. I was a high school teacher, and then I worked in every role. My probably most favorite time was when I was a middle school principal for nine years. Love the middle school. It's just a great place to be. But the last 19 years, I've served as a superintendent in school. 10 in New Jersey, and then I had to leave New Jersey because Governor Christie was elected, and those of you that followed that dilemma, and decided to move on to New York and worked just outside of Queens, New York, in the largest high school district in Nassau County on the island. Very diverse district, and it just was a wonderful experience there. I've seen the superintendent search process from both sides, and I've seen the superintendent search process from, done and completed by many firms, and personally chose to work with McPherson and Jacobson because of the processes and protocol that we'll work through with you to identify your next educational leader. So, thank you for having us. We're really looking forward to this, and sure you'll be pleased with the outcome.
Before we got started, we had an informal meet and greet, but some of the board members may not have been here. So, if you don't mind, we'll just go around the table and introduce the board members that are here.
Tanya Basine.
Adelle Martin.
Kristina.
Rodney Jordan. I've been on the board since 2012.
Carlos Klein.
So, one of the things we'd like to open up with, and I know Ms. Campson said that she'd kind of wanted us to go through our whole presentation and then have questions at the end, and that's great, for the sake of time. But we'd really like to ask this question before we get started, and that is, what do you as a board expect this search, in this search? What do you expect out of it? And I know the final outcome, we want a superintendent that, fill in the blank, but what are you expecting this search? Could you give us a little feedback on that, please?
Ms. Basine.
Me, your mother.
Okay. Good.
Closing the achievement gap. One who's capable of, and who has experience, doing just that.
Anything else?
Identifying someone who has a proven track record. Also, someone who can come into a community and take the initiative and time to connect with the community and to understand the needs.
I think we need your expertise in involving the community to be a part of this process, but to also allow us as a board to, many of the members here are new, and I've only been through one search before, and so has Mr. Jordan. And so, for us, this is going to be a new experience. And we, the reason that your firm stood out was because of the experience that you brought. And so, we're looking really to you to guide us through this process so that we are collaborative with the community, that we understand the community's desires, that we put forth our desires, and at the end of the day, the best person is selected for our division.
Good.
And the question that you're asking is different from the qualifications that we are looking at.
Right, it is.
Well, then, I would say, as far as the search process, commitment to confidentiality as part of the process, I think what others have said in terms of engagement is important. And then, to the extent that possible, just work with us to ensure that you're hearing a voice of the board as a whole.
Great. Well, thank you for that. Thank you for that feedback, and we will certainly do those things. And we work for you. So, we certainly want to listen to you, and we want to make sure that the things that we're doing are, that you understand why we're doing what we're doing, and we understand what you want us to do within our process. So, if you have your proposal that we sent, on page five of that proposal, it's called the executive summary. I think we're lined up on pages, but it's page five. Talks about McPherson and Jacobson provides a comprehensive search process, and below are some of the highlights of the process. So, here's, I just want to run through a couple of these, or a few of these, just to kind of get us kicked off here and get us started. Our process is comprehensive, provides critical support for the most time-consuming part of this, and that is recruiting and screening applicants. That is a, that's a difficult and time-consuming thing, and the board just, you know, it's best that you not be saddled with that. That's why we take that on ourselves to, not only to recruit, but to screen them as well. And recruiting is a big part in this firm, and we were having that discussion a little bit earlier with several people, in that Dr. Ferry and I, and as well as the other superintendents who are on the team, we've been a part of national superintendent organizations that we know superintendents all over the nation. And so, as a part of that, we're contacting friends of ours who are superintendents in areas and asking them, do you know someone who's, who might be a good candidate? Someone who maybe is a sitting superintendent, or maybe someone who's not a sitting superintendent would be a good candidate to consider. So, we're always encouraging people to take a look. You know, I'm in this area. I know, I think I told you this, Ms. Campson, you know, I know Dr. Spence over in Virginia Beach. I know him quite well. I know Dr. Cotton in Chesapeake, you know, I, Dr. Bracy. I know Dr. Bracy. So, all of those individuals who have a, more of a grasp, I guess you could say, of what's going on in this particular area, maybe not necessarily right in your school system, but this area, they may know of some individuals who might be good candidates. So, we do reach out and recruit. Someone mentioned, I think, transparency. That's really the hallmark of our protocol. Stakeholders are so important in our process. We believe in that process, and we will come back up here, we'll make a determination whether that's a one, two, or three-day event based on the stakeholders that you want us to listen to. Dr. Ferry will talk about that in just a few minutes, and the questions that we ask, and the input that we get from them, and how we record that. But we think transparency is really a major part of our process. We meet with groups to ensure that there's broad-based stakeholder input. We listen to them. We record their answers. We want to hear what the individuals, the stakeholders in this school district feel about the superintendent. In addition to that, sometimes individuals can't attend a stakeholder meeting, so we have an online survey that we provide that individuals can go on and give their input that will be included in the document as well. McPherson and Jacobson's consultants actually recruit candidates, I already said that, that meet the criteria that you set forth. We will recruit non-traditional candidates if that's what the board chooses. We don't actively seek that unless the board wants us to do that. Applicant confidentiality is really important to attract the top candidates. I know you can understand this. If I'm a sitting superintendent and I'm interested in this position as a superintendent, applying for this position, but I'm a little worried about what if my current board finds out I'm applying for this other job, how that would impact my relationship with them? So, we, that's the first question that every sitting superintendent will ask when you call them and say, are you interested? They'll say, will my name be released? And so, they're concerned about that. So, we keep that confidential, and we keep that confidential throughout the process. If you call me and say, and I'm just going to tell you, if you call me and say, hey, can you, has so-and-so applied, or can you tell me who has applied? I'm saying, I'm sorry, I can't. I just can't do that. We keep it confidential until the very end. And then, when we bring those, and we have this team of individuals who will vet those candidates down, and we'll bring those to you, and then you'll make the determination if there's finalists in that, in that group of semifinalists. So, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. But anyway, you'll, you'll know, this sounds a little crude, I don't mean it the way it's going to come out, but you'll know when you need to know. And if there's not a need to know before then, we'll wait till we come back and provide that. I know everybody is so anxious. They get really anxious and really start questioning, and rumors start flying, and who's applied and who's not applied, especially if you have some internal candidates that you think may apply. We'll treat internal candidates just like we treat external candidates, and get the same opportunity and the same close look as everyone else. So, those are some things we'll deal with as we go through this. At the bottom of that page, it says, we are so confident of our ability to identify the district's criteria, recruit and screen applicants against those criteria, and assist during the transition period that we guarantee our service. If your superintendent leaves for whatever reason during that guaranteed period, we will repeat the process at no charge except for the actual expenses for coming back up here. We don't want to do that. We don't want to repeat the process. We want to make sure that we put the candidates in front of you who are the best candidates, and that you make the very best selection. And the ones, I have to tell you, the ones that I've been through on this side of the fence with McPherson and Jacobson, every time they have selected, the boards have selected a solid candidate. Of course, there's been a couple that I thought, well, any of the three would have been a solid candidate, but the board selected good candidates. We'll move on to, on page 23 in your booklet. It's called the Five Phases of the Superintendent Search, just so you kind of get a feel for this and how this works. Phase one, which basically we're in today, establish the characteristics of the new superintendent. We're going to do that. Dr. Ferry is going to take us, or he and I will take you through this a little bit later, determining what characteristics you're looking for, for the very best superintendent that we can find. We'll establish timelines for the superintendent search today. We'll try to do that today. You may have to have some flexibility in that, because you have your calendars, and we have our calendars, and they may, they're going to have to, and I know we're under a, Ms. Campson made me aware of, under kind of that 180-day requirement in the state of Virginia that we have to meet. And so, it's going to be quick, but I think we can make it work. I think we can expedite it. We're going to have to be careful in setting our timeline in a way that meets for all of us, for you as well as for us. So, we'll look at some of those timelines for the search. We'll determine advertising venues. Dr. Ferry is going to talk about that in just a few minutes. Phase two, then we have stakeholder input meetings. Those you will determine today. You will tell us, or we'll narrow that list of individuals, of groups, that you say it's important that we have stakeholder meetings with those individuals, and we'll work with you on setting the day, the time, the schedule for meeting with them where we ask them the questions. Phase two, we develop and distribute the applications and the advertising materials. We, and we're going to tell you about how we do that as well, but I can assure you, it's nationwide. People will know through all the ways that we get it out there, in addition to calling and telling them. There's lots of ways for them to find out about this position and how to apply. We'll, again, recruit, and we'll track the applicants, those in our system. We're able to tell there's certain documents and certain things that they're required to submit. If they haven't submitted one, we're on the phone with them going, hey, you haven't sent your resume in. It's not loaded. Are you still interested? Can you get this to us? So, we track that to make sure that every applicant, they were not, we come to the end and it closes, and someone missed a document, or somebody didn't get something on that they should have got on. So, we track that to make sure that they have everything in that they need. Phase three is evaluation and reference checks of applicants, and then we also develop interview questions that, once you bring the finalist in, we'll work with you on that to develop questions that are good, sound, educational questions that will draw from those superintendent candidates the information that hopefully you're looking for. And most superintendents are prepared to ask, answer those type of questions, but we'll work with you on the types of questions that you want to ask. Then the selection of applicants to be interviewed. There will be, our team will vet that down to a number, whatever that number is that we fill, and then we will do background checks on those. And when we call references, excuse me, not background checks, reference checks. When we do a reference check, we all know that when someone submits an application and they submit their references, and I call that reference, what are they going to say? Oh, they're great. They're fantastic. A good friend of mine. I like them. So, the important question that we ask is, give me the name of a couple of other people who also know this person. And then, when we call those people, we'll say, can you give us a name, or a name or two of people that you know know this person? And so, as you work down the line, what you find, sometimes you find that same answer. Quality, top-notch, fantastic person, fantastic educator. Sometimes you find things out that you didn't find out from the first. So, we go, we try to go at least three-deep in trying to find out about that person. And that interesting thing now called the Internet, if you really search it and look for it, you can sometimes find things that may bring some questions to mind. And sometimes those are legitimate, and sometimes those things are not. So, just because it's on the Internet, and something has, no offense to the media, but just because it's in print doesn't necessarily mean it's true. So, and I think we all know that. But anyway, we'll look for that. We'll vet through all that. We'll work through all that. And anything that we find, I promise you, when we come and meet with you, will make you aware of it. We're not going to hide anything. And you may find something that we didn't find, but we're pretty good at finding things. So, we'll work with you on that as well. Select the applicants to be interviewed. You'll interview the candidates, the candidates. Also, when you bring those finalists, and I'm going to use three just as a reference, just say you have three finalists. You may say, we want four. You may say, we want two. I don't know. I mean, every finalist you want. When you bring those in, we'll work with you in setting a schedule on the day that you interview them, which will include some interaction with stakeholders and talking to stakeholder groups. So, we have stakeholders on the front end that give us information based on some questions that we ask, that we compile a document. I worked on LaGrange, Georgia, Troop County. That document is filled with all the answers that were given by the different stakeholder groups. And so, we'll provide you with that document so you can read through there. We don't change it. We don't, you know, we don't correct it. If somebody says something that may hurt the board member's feelings, we just put it in there, and that's what they said, you know? Or something about the way things have been done in the past, or whatever. We just put in what they say when we ask those questions. So, you'll get a copy of that at the end as well. And then, there'll be, after interviewing the finalist, then you make your selection. A contract is offered, and then hopefully, an agreement can be reached at that point. So, it is a long process. It is time-consuming. There's a lot to it, but I think it's a great process, and I think one of the most valuable things that we do are those stakeholder meetings, and the community having a sense that they're involved in helping determine the future of the school district by giving us input. And there's some really interesting things that come out in those stakeholder groups. The good, the bad, the ugly, and the pretty. It all comes out, and so, just be prepared for that. Any questions? Well, I won't, we're going to hold questions in. I'm sorry. So, then, phase five is establish superintendent performance objectives and the guarantee as well. We can work with you on that if you choose to do that. We're going to jump now to page 24, if you're following in your book. Phase one, and Dr. Ferry and I are going to go through this, and this is kind of a step-by-step process, and I, kind of a little deeper than what I just went over, but we're going to talk about this just for just a few minutes. Phase one, we work with the board and the stakeholders group, and we use a group process with the board identifying the most important characteristics of the future superintendent. So, we're going to do that today, okay? And I think you're already prepared. Using this nominal group technique, you're going to put those up there, and we're going to come up with the five, because you say, well, why do we need those? Well, because we're going to develop a brochure about your school district, the good things about the school district, the demographic information about the school district, your belief statements, your mission, whatever you decide to put in that brochure. But those characteristics will go in that brochure, and it will say that this Board of Education is looking for someone who can, will, or is those things that you're going to identify in just a few minutes. And so, when it goes out, those potential candidates are going to know right up front kind of where you stand. We're going to establish appropriate timelines and target dates for the selection process. We're going to determine with the board appropriate advertising venues, and Dr. Ferry will do that and go through that with you. We're going to identify appropriate stakeholder groups. Which groups do you want to meet with? That sometime is really interesting. Who do you think's important? And we'll talk about those as well, and I think I'll do that just a little bit later. Assist the board in determining compensation parameters. I don't know if y'all are prepared to talk about that today. Dr. Ferry did a little research on that to see what the districts, your size, this area, comparable salaries would be, but you need to think about that, because we have to advertise it. That's probably the second question a superintendent will ask, is, you know, what's the salary range? You know? Now, past the salary range, there's some other things that Dr. Ferry will talk about, but they want to know, what's the salary range? Is it, if it's $30,000 to $40,000, you're probably not going to get many candidates. But if it's a little higher, and he'll talk about that, then, you know, you want to, and I get it. I get it about the salary. There are individuals who don't make the kind of money superintendents make. But if you get a great one, and you pay them well, and they do a good job, they can unite a district and unite a city and take you forward and do fantastic things, maybe that you've not seen done before. So, you want someone, you want to pay them fairly, but, you know, you're going to, whatever you pay them, there are going to be individuals, and all of you know this, who are going to say, oh, you're paying them way too much for what they do. So, but we need to talk about that. What are those parameters? Because we need to let those candidates know. And identify the point of contact for the district. And I want to make an assumption that Ms. Campson, from the board perspective, is kind of the point of contact. Now, if that's not right, please, I'm sorry?
That's right.
That's right. And then, Ms. Karen's going to help us as well and kind of be the liaison?
Yeah.
Okay?
Carol Robinson.
Okay. All right. And, I'm sorry, your name?
Carol Robinson.
Carol Robinson. Okay.
She's our project manager for it.
I'm sorry?
He's the project manager already.
Okay.
That's why she needs to be included.
I saw your name. I did see your name. Okay? All right. Thank you. Well, we'll be in touch, and you three can guide us on who we need to talk to when I call and, or text or whatever, and say, hey, we need to look at this, and we need to put this together, whatever. Then, y'all can guide me. I said, y'all. Sorry. I'm from Alabama. All of you.
I'll say, y'all.
It's fine.
So, you can guide us on who we need to speak with. Do you have a question?
Yeah. Is it okay if I?
Well, we're going to hold questions until the very end.
That's up to you.
Okay. I didn't know.
All right. I didn't know.
That's up to you. Okay. All right. So, now, phase two.
So, phase two. First of all, I'm thrilled to hear that transparency is a critical component of what you want to see the process to become. And I look at that from two perspectives. It's not only important for the board and the community, but it's also very important for the candidates, because through a process that's transparent, they're going to be able to come in and identify. You want to have a marriage of who's coming in to the city, and by them having the opportunity to go through a process that's transparent, goes a long way to really making sure that happens, which I believe, in my experience, also emphasizes the stability piece in terms of that. So, that's important. So, we're going to work with you to have, and schedule input meetings from stakeholders, and you'll identify who those stakeholder groups are. And basically, specifically, we're only going to ask them four questions, so that we're consistent with each of the groups that we meet with. And the four questions we're going to ask them, and then we're going to record everything they say, as Barry mentioned, are, tell us the good things about your community and your city. Second question is, tell us the good things about your schools and district. The third, which is essential, what are the issues that the incoming superintendent should be aware of as he or she is transitioning into the school district? What are those issues? And the fourth, what characteristics do you believe new superintendent should have to ensure his or her success? We will tape script all those comments and put it in a very detailed report and get that back to you. Again, we will meet with these identified stakeholder groups to get input into the process. Most commonly, those groups include central office administration, building administrators, teachers, classified staff, community members, business groups, and I would certainly emphasize students. Because the students will really give us the information that we really need.
We'd be also, our board, and they're with us right over here, faith and charity. I'm sorry, we do not introduce them.
Great, great. And in my experience, it's good to have a diversified group of students so that we can get perspectives from students who are involved in co-curricular activities, who are perhaps athletic or any athletes, who are AP students, who may not be AP students, all, all of that, very important. Again, as Barry mentioned, those who can't attend the meetings, we'll have a survey available. And if requested by you, we can have those surveys translated into multiple languages, which I, I would encourage, I think that's important. Then we will develop promotional literature based upon, and brochures announcing the vacancy. We actually have graphic artists who will put together a brochure based upon the information we get today to really highlight the school district and community, including the selection criteria that we're developing today, who the board members are, and what the application process is. It's important, and timelines, so that we can get all of that very clearly communicated to those who are interested in the position. Then we will place the announcement of the vacancy, and we do that on our website, which has an average of 150,000 hits per month. And we will also advertise, we will place that announcement of the vacancy in all state Board of Education agencies and administrative associations throughout the country. So that's usually a very good way to get the information out that this potential exists at essentially no cost to the district, because that's what these organizations do. Then we'll develop the application, which is going to be unique to you, particularly asking some of the application questions, again, as the criteria that you determine as a Board of Education. We'll post the application information on, on our website, and then notify interested applicants in terms of how to use the application software. And this is all taken care of at the, at the office in Nebraska. Then, as Barry mentioned, we will actively begin the recruiting process as well, so that we're not passive in, in just having applicants apply, but that we're actually going out there and, and asking, I know for myself, I've already put out some feelers for people I know, some people I know in the area here as well, to identify some potential candidates that we could reach out to, to see if they, to gauge their interest in the position. And we'll have a much better idea if that match works after we develop the criteria and have the input sessions with the stakeholders. Again, highly important, and I don't want, not to be redundant, but confidentiality is critical because of what impact this could have on applicants that are sitting superintendents, who really, you know, may look at this, and if they do apply, see this as a fantastic opportunity to work in a district like this, and we don't want to jeopardize their experience back home. We will keep the applicants totally informed in terms of the process, where we are in terms of timelines, and we will communicate with board members in a very, in a timely manner at all times. That's Phase Two.
And added to that, also, and I think I said this earlier, but I want to say it again, I said that we wouldn't tell you who applied. We will tell you the number. If you say, you know, at this point in the process, how many applicants do we have? It may be 10, it might be 20, it might be 50. We'll tell you the number that we have, because we can track that, and we know the number that's applied, but we won't tell you who they are. Phase Three, we'll evaluate each applicant against your selected criteria to determine if we feel like they meet their criteria, if they're a good fit. You know, you hear that all the time, is this person a good fit? We want to put candidates in front of you who are a good fit for this district, so we'll evaluate against your criteria. We'll conduct reference checks. I've already said, we go three deep, we do the Google, we find out everything we possibly can about those individuals. We do pre-interview and video of shortlist applicants. Our team will narrow it down to a number, I hate to say what the number is, but we will, actually, those, we'll call them, and they will be asked three questions, and they do it from their home or office or wherever they choose to do it, over a video camera, and they video themselves answering three questions. So we take that information and we narrow that down to a, I would call a semifinalist list that we'll bring to you. And from that semifinalist list, then you select the finalists based on the video and the information that you have about those, about those candidates. So, a very interesting process and very helpful, I can assure you. Those individuals sometimes who look really great on paper may not be as great on video. And some people who we put in the semifinalist, or we vet down, we think they might be, when you see them on video, go, wow, they're amazing. And then you have those who are amazing on paper and on video. So it gives you a good sense of these individuals, and then of course you interview them and you make that determination about that person. Assist the board in developing a set of interview questions, I said that earlier, that reflect the identified selection criteria and characteristics. There's not a big rush on that now, that's in Phase Three, we'll get to that, but we'll help you select and, and write questions that would be appropriate for interviews. Phase Four, Ralph?
And then we move into Phase Four, which we will then review the candidates with the board to assist the board to determine which candidates they will interview. And we will present a complete list of the applicants, however, there will be a shortlist submitted to the board based upon what we do in terms of the vetting, in terms of the videos and the paper. Upon reviewing the recommendations, we'll assist the board with identifying which applicants you wish to interview. Now, in terms of the interview procedure, some boards choose to have semi, to interview semifinalists, which would be a larger number than perhaps the three that we may send to you. That, that's something that you have to let us know what you choose to do. However, if you choose to interview semifinalists, those interviews are in private and confidential with the board. It won't be until it's narrowed down to the three, or four, or two finalists that Barry mentioned, that you will open up the transparency piece in terms of the interview there. So that's something that Barry will work with you on in terms of your choice, in terms of which way you want to go with that. We are flexible in terms of that. If the board chooses, we will schedule semifinal interviews with you. And again, typically, those are only conducted with the board, and then you'll select finalists. Or we can vet down and select finalists based upon showing some of the, you know, if we have six or seven videos you want to see, and then we select the three, then you're going to, three, or two, or four, you'll interview them through a different protocol. After that, we will assist you, the groups, in identifying by the board and planning a meeting for each candidate to provide feedback to the board. So we will, if the board chooses to involve stakeholders in the interview process, so we have, let's say, three finalists, and you choose to involve stakeholders in the interview process, the purpose of these groups are to promote the district and the community to the candidate. And that's what we talked about before, where I mentioned how important it is for transparency, so that when the candidate comes and meets, meets with stakeholder groups, that they're promoting the district to the candidate as well. And to form an impression of each candidate as they have a dialogue with, with the candidate. And also, the board will identify in those stakeholder groups chairpersons for each of the stakeholder groups that we will meet with and actually provide coaching for their roles and responsibilities in terms of meeting with the candidates. To form a, and to get a record of the group's consensus and impressions. And then what will happen is, we will seal their impressions in a sealed envelope and provide them to you for your review after the candidate, after the, let's say, three candidates go through the process with the stakeholder groups. So that would give you just more information and more data in terms of going into the interview with the candidate. So, actually, when I was a sitting superintendent, I followed the same protocol with interviewing principals. So I would have three principal finalists, and they would spend a day in the school, and every teacher and every staff member would have the opportunity to interface with them, and then provide their impression in a sealed envelope, which would give myself and the board additional information in terms of principalship. So very similar. Then what will happen is, once the finalists are identified, we'll work with the district to coordinate their day. Normally, those are three days, we're just going on three candidates. So let's say it's three days during one week, where we also work with coordinating activities for the candidate's spouse or significant other to come with them to the community, and hopefully they will get a tour of the community. They can, if they're from out of state or from a distance where they have to relocate, they can look at housing opportunities, things of that nature. Schools, if they have school level aged children, you know, the schools in the community and so on. So that's all important as well. Then we will make final arrangements for the, each candidate's visit to the district, and we'll contact the finalists and schedule their interview dates for you, and we'll notify, and then we will notify the candidates that are not selected to go through the interview process. And we will, and then after the whole process is finished, we'll personally contact each finalist who was not selected after they go through the interview process with the board.
Those are fun calls, by the way.
Yeah, they're, they're.
Not really.
Not fun. But anyway, and then, of course, included in the fee is the criminal, financial, and credential verification background check for the finalist. Okay? That's Phase Four.
And the last phase is Phase Five, I'll just very quickly hit on that. If you choose to, you can go through Phase Five and establish, we can help establish performance objectives for the new superintendent, what you expect, and it's kind of a mentoring coaching, if you will, experience for them and with you as the board to kind of make sure you get off to a good start. And if you're looking at that, it's on page 30, we provide a guarantee. If the board chooses to use our complete service, we will guarantee our process for two years. If the person selected leaves a position for whatever reason within that guaranteed period, we'll repeat that process at no charge except for the expense. So that's basically an overview of the whole process. I know that's a tremendous amount of information being thrown at you all at once. We're going to help you understand as we walk through this process, what's next, what do we need to do next, what do we need to generate next? And so hopefully, it won't be as complex as we walk through it as it is possibly today as you're thinking about, wow, this is a lot to do and a lot to think about. So we're going to help you with that. We're going to move on to the search calendar. There is a timeline, you would send a timeline.
Hold on, excuse me for just one second, Dr. Carroll. Mr. Jordan?
Is it, I know we say we're going to save them to the end, but I, there's.
Get some questions now.
You wanted to do a little break? Yeah, I'm sure, that's fine.
And I just, I just want to, this is very overarching in terms of the process that you described. So you've, you've described this transparency process, and what I think I'm hearing is that you're describing that we would take some candidates on a community process. And I thought that as a board, we had talked about not doing that. So I just want to get some, before we get too far deep into that, I thought that as part of our focus on confidentiality, and as we were reviewing proposals, that part of our intent as a board was that we were not going to have finalists come and be interviewed by stakeholder groups and do, do, excuse my language, but do the, do the parade thing.
Right. And that's completely up to the board.
Right, but I thought I heard you describe in this process, doing that. So I just want to get some clarity on that before we get too far down the path.
We're not, it's not, we're not married to it, it's your decision.
Exactly, and that's the conversation that we had. The conversation was, is it a non-negotiable for you all that we strictly abide by the last leg of the interview process? And that was the question that we had. And, and then, so they said that it was totally up to the board, and that's where we left it. And so, to their point, whatever process that the board decides on, if we feel that having those chairpersons, as you mentioned, interview the final candidate, that's up to us, and that, that lies with us. But we do not have to do that, we're under no obligation to.
And I'm, I'm comfortable with that, but I think based upon what I've heard thus far, and the scheduling and the timeline, and since we're getting ready to talk about the calendar, I think there needs to be some clarity, because as I recall it, not only did we want to verify it wasn't required, but I thought we also factored that into our decision-making. So I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
Let me make sure I, we've been clear. The part that I think we're talking about is when you, the night we're here, and you say, these are our three finalists, we back away at that point. Our job is done. Your job is to select the superintendent in the best way that you feel you need to select the superintendent. If that's including stakeholders and some type of, you know, meeting the candidates, that's fine. If you choose not to do that, and the board just selects, just interviews those individuals, and you select from that, that's the board's decision. We're not, we follow the process and we give you the options, but again, once those three are selected, we back away, we're here for support, we'll help you any way we can, but we're not going to dictate to you how you do that.
No, I was just describing what our service is. If you, if you decide you want to go in that direction, then we will be available to work with the chairpersons of the stakeholder group so that we can make sure there's maintained focus in terms of that process. But if you choose not to go in that direction, that's fine.
We're not advocating that stakeholders, I don't, I've never advocated stakeholders interview a superintendent. They meet them possibly in, in searches, they interact with them, but they do not interview them. They don't, they're not firing questions. That's your job as the board.
I just, one other overarching question, the, you described that we would not see all applicants, the resumes of, or the applications of all applicants. What's the philosophy behind that, and why, if we wish to see the all applications, is that a problem?
I'll let your attorney, where's your attorney? She was here a minute ago. He stepped out? Sorry?
Oh, I didn't say, I had the same question, though.
Well, I have a different one, if you want to wait till the attorney.
Yeah, let's wait for him to get back, and he, he and I had a brief discussion about that in the beginning, and I, I'd rather him answer that from the Virginia legal code than for me to try to explain it. But we try to hold that confidential, because we're going to tell candidate, and we need to know upfront, if that's not going to be confidential information, we need to know it. Because I don't want to tell, Mr. Clinton, this is going to be confidential, your name is not going to get in the newspaper unless you're a finalist. And then, a week down the road, his name's plastered all over the newspaper, it's hurt his standing in his community.
So, my question was about the timeline, based on your experience here. We know we have 180 days, and which will kind of put us right around, I guess, January, around that time there.
That's right, that's somewhere up here.
What's your experience, and realistically, finding, I know you said you'll do all the great work to find great candidates, but I've heard several different things in the respect that this time of year is not a good time to try to get individuals, or there may be great candidates who are still stuck in their contracts and can't be released into their contracts until the end of a school year. Putting that up front there, what could be the expectation that this may be longer or that we may need additional time to find the right candidate, you know, just based on your professional experience? I just know I heard that 180 days, I heard January, I've heard a lot of different things, but as our professional, you know, kind of coach is here to help us through this process, what are some of your thoughts about that?
We're through a very similar timeline in, in La Grange, Georgia, similar to yours. Had a little bit more time than what you have, but it was, it was similar, it was in the middle of the year, and they, that board didn't feel good about it, and what can we do? And one thing we did was we said that you can negotiate a contract, go ahead and name your superintendent and negotiate a contract for a start date later than, I think in that case it was July 1st or June 1st, I can't remember. So they hired the individual, had him under contract, he had like three months, I think, to resign and make his board aware there. And then there was three months where the interim continued to be interim until that person could arrive. So you could do something like that, say, start date would be.
Fast in this district.
Start date would be on this date or up until that date, whatever, you know, and give them a range to start, start the contract.
I also think the timing gets you out front, in other, in terms of the turnover and change that occurs after the holidays through the spring. It gets you out front in terms of having the ability to identify.
It gets you out front, in terms of having the ability to identify better candidates. I'd like to look at it the glass half full, in terms of that. In LaGrange, they were, that board was very concerned, we had over, we had, like, sixty applicants for that job, so, it wasn't, it wasn't, and they were like, oh, we were afraid we wouldn't find anyone. But they did find a great superintendent, who then needed some additional time to end his contract, and make his board aware, and transition over to them, and they, they structured the contract, and I would hope that Virginia law would allow you to do the same.
It does.
Okay.
While we're waiting for Mr. Cloud, maybe they can continue on. Yeah.
Well, we're on timelines, and that's on page thirty-one, and these are just some, based on your January date, that we need to hire this person. These are just suggestions. We may not be able to nail these exact dates down today. This may be a process that we're, uh, that we're starting, but I think today, we're, if you look at that page, the, uh, at the beginning of the search, September, which we're in, advertising decisions will be made, I think we can, hopefully, y'all can make those today, uh, and tell us that. The quality of superintendent, we've done that. Application information is posted. I would hope that by October first, I would hope that we'd be able to put some information together and start, uh, posting this. So, if we posted on October first, formal timelines established, uh, you know, within the next few days, I'm not saying we have to nail it down today, but we need some general dates and weeks that we can look at to, uh, to try to do this process, and then, try to, a brochure to advertise, uh, you know, hopefully, uh, very soon as well. And then, uh, October, um, stakeholder group meetings, I've kinda looked at, now, it's gonna already be advertised, stakeholders' meetings are gonna be going on while we're already advertising, but I've kinda penciled in, uh, October sixteen, seventeen, or the twenty-second through twenty-four, some in that, in that timeframe. Then, a time that we can present the stakeholder input to the board, applicants arrive in our office, meaning our office, I penciled in, and I'm just penciling this in, please understand, I'm not dictating this at all, you all can help us determine that, please do. Somewhere in the middle of November, uh, maybe, or, maybe the tenth to the fifteenth of November during that time, and I don't even know what days those fall on. And then, mid-November, all the completed applicant files are forwarded to the consultants, where it takes us a little time to vet, and to call, and to review, and to get together as a team, to try to narrow that down. And then, approximately two to four weeks after that, uh, after the closing date, and I, again, just penciled in December second, that's nothing sacred about that, that consultants provide information to the board on all the applicants who complete the process, and consultants present the summary profile and the video interviews to the board. That's right at the beginning of December, the board selects the candidates that wants to interview, and then, you will set up the dates, uh, we'll contact those people who are not, uh, selected, and then we'll set those dates, uh, for interviews with the board, which will be somewhere, and it's a terrible, that part is terrible timing. I put December twenty-fifth, but, no, I'm just kidding, I didn't put December twenty-fifth. (laughing). I didn't do that. But I did put, like, that week before, like, the sixteenth through the twentieth is a possible time to interview. I know that's not good, it's either that, or what's gonna happen if you do it between Christmas Day and New Year's Day, that's a terrible time, people travel, family, all of that. So, it does, we do have some constraints here, that we're gonna have to look at, but those are just general timelines. Again, we don't have to nail those down perfectly today, but I need to be able to communicate with you, and all of you communicate together, what works for you, and we'll try to work with you on that.
Okay.
Any comments on the timelines? I'm not trying to dictate those, you all need to set those.
I would say the best way to approach that is to, um, share those dates with our clerk and Ms. Camson, and she will be able to tell you if the board already has some obligations, because I know we have some governance training, and there's a Virginia School Board Association meeting that occurs in November. But generally, what we have as a board, um, some I agree to, is that we try to keep Wednesdays open and available, um, for, um, board meetings. And so, um, we know that this commitment, um, is, is something that we have to fully commit to, and so, we would just say that Wednesdays usually are the days that are open.
Okay.
But I would get with, um, Ms. Tanner and, uh, Ms. Camson, and they can provide it, and then what we can do is get back to you as soon as possible, and, and get that timeline real concrete.
I'll, I'll, I'll look at those again, and before I, uh, before I leave, um, tomorrow, I will try to forward that information to her, just what I have here. And then, again, th- those are not in concrete, those are just suggested timelines, and we'll work through that.
And, and the week of December sixteenth, that Dr. Carroll mentioned, sixteenth through the twentieth, that eight, that December eighteen is a business meeting day, so we are meeting that day, anyway. Uh, Dr. Carroll, were you saying one day for each candidate, or?
Yes, ma'am.
One day for each candidate?
That's what we suggest, but again, you all make that determination based on whether, you know, and you have to understand, if you go a full day, uh, let's say, in eight o'clock in the morning, you go all day, if you choose to do that, I'm not saying you have to, and then, that night, you interview the candidate, so you're gonna have to bring them in the day before, so it's really a two-night stay here, they'll have to, especially if they're from somewhere else, uh, not from around here. Fly them in, go through the process, and then fly out, so it'd be two nights of hotel stay and flights and all of that, which, again, I think you asked me this earlier, I want everybody to know that that's at your expense.
Right, and it, well, and so, it looks like we need multi-days, which is why we will be making, we'll need to make that decision quickly.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, so that everyone can make sure, 'cause I know I'm supposed to be in Florida that week, I'll have to make changes to those things if we go that week, um, so, and I'm sure everyone else will, so that's why we wanna come out quick, 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 so that we can all be sure that we make our calendars available, and make the changes that we need to, like, not going to Florida that week.
Well, and that may be, you know, that, that week may not be good, because once you interview the question, uh, the, it may be crystal clear to all of you, you may be unanimous right off the board, but you may not be. And what happens then, do you need some time to kind of absorb and process and, and talk, and, you know, I, I know you don't really do that, but, you know, when I say talk, I mean, like, one-on-one, not, not as a group, but, um, kinda figure it out, you know, so you're gonna need some time to, to process that, so. We wanna be careful we give you enough time to do that, and then, make the offer to the candidate that's selected, and you have to, you have to be ready with a, you have to be ready with a, with your, a contract to say, "Here it is, this is," you know, and so, usually, a superintendent will have a board attorney, and then your board attorney, and that board attorney will talk, and so, that takes some time, and, uh, so we need to be cognizant of that as well, with your end, with your end date in, in mind.
So, I would say if you can get that information to them by the time you leave tomorrow...
Right.
That would be really helpful.
Is there any question? Mr. Cloud?
Oh, and, and Mr. Cloud is back. So, Mr. Jordan had a question, I'll let him restate it, and...
It, it was stated earlier that the school board would not see, uh, the applications of all applicants, and I asked why that was, because we've done that before, and the response was, was that there was some information, that legal opinion that you had, that, so we're just trying to get your feedback on that.
Well, there, there, I was just asked the question right before the meeting. My concern was that if the records are given to the school board, until I've researched to see, I don't know whether or not they would be available, but I'll be glad to take a look at it and give an opinion, and if there's an exemption, that I think would cover those records, so that you don't have to provide them, then, uh, that was just a, in talking, that was one suggestion I had. But, you know, the board doesn't need to see all the applicants, and not providing it.
Yeah, I think that, and I, I guess, Mr. Jordan, what you're saying is that, I guess, the pool that they get, being able to look at all their applications, um, I think that's what he's saying, is that all the applications that they receive, so they got sixty applications, um, they've stated that they have a policy, they keep it as confidentiality, but I think Mr. Jordan is asking, why wouldn't we as board members be allowed to see those?
All right, ju- just for, so, so I support the confidentiality, and as I said earlier, I think that's something...
That's good.
We have to commit to, from, from the beginning, we've talked about that. I don't know what the process is, in terms of the consultants being in receipt of the applications, and the board being able to view what the consultants have received, versus them being sent and are in the possession of, of the board. I'm simply saying that if there are going to be applicants, then I think it is all right to be able to have input, if for some reason, we see a candidate that we think the consultants should consider, that maybe the consultants would not have considered. So, I think it's important that we be able to have access to...
Well, I, I think that's fine, and I'll be happy to give an opinion to the board as to the board's, uh, restrictions. Of course, the board is bound by the Virginia Conflict of Interest and the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, uh, and so, any records that go to the board are potentially discoverable upon request, uh, and, and, uh, and I'll take a look and see. And if it can't, then the applicants can be told ahead of time...
Right.
That, uh, all applications will go to the board, and that the board will have to share them with the public, you know, potentially.
No, if we can't, I mean, my position is, if we can't predict, protect the confidentiality, I don't wanna, for me, I don't wanna go down that path, but if we can, I think that is...
Well, and I'm not sure whether you can or not, I'll be glad to take a look at that question.
It's only gonna cut our pool of applicants.
Yeah, what's gonna cut our pool?
Us, them sharing, I mean, you can see, I mean, it seems obvious, if, if it's shared, the more you share, the more that gets out, and if I'm an applicant, and I'm interested in the job, but I don't wanna make that public at the moment, then I may choose to apply for a different job.
So, can it...
I think that that's a, a big concern.
I guess, just as much as we had a discussion about public stakeholder, you know, kinda when we get to a finalist point, um, is it the possibility that as a board, we can make a decision about whether or not we wanna see applications prior to the finalist? And I don't think there's anything against us making a determination as a board, right, Jack? So, I, I, 'cause, I mean, personally, I don't wanna do anything or be in any situation where we may taint or turn away great candidates. I've already raised my concern about the middle of the year type of thing, um, and I'm, and I think that based on what I'm seeing through their different phases, they're gathering all the information that they need from us on the front end, to do the job for us on the front end, to determine what we need. So, when you, I'm expecting that what you send to me is based on what we've identified as a board, will of the board, um, in that these, that you, we're paying you to do this, to, to find that, to present it to us, and that we can have a great pool in front of us. I know there may be other people, but I, I don't even wanna put myself in a situation where there's some other person who, you know, may know me from across the country, and has sent something in here, and I'm even questioning about that, I don't even want that, I want a final list. That's my personal opinion.
Ms. Basine?
Well, um...
Cause we need to get the activities...
I think, um, I think some of the issues raised may be misconstrued a little bit, um, and I'm not gonna speak for Mr. Jordan, but I think the concern is, and previously, during our, a previous, uh, search process, we were able to see the applicants. And even though we developed, you know, a list of characteristics, there, there may be individuals within that highly qualified pool of applicants, that may have characteristics that we didn't even think about, that may rise to the top, and it just gives us an opportunity to say, "Hey, you know, what about this individual?" You know, can we look at him? So, that's, at least that's what I think, well, that, that was a question that I had, I don't know if I'm, um, so I'm hearing, uh, a different interpretation, perhaps, being discussed here.
I'm not misconstruing it, that's just, I don't wanna see it, that's just my personal opinion.
Okay, and that's, that's, that's fine, yeah.
And, and my understanding is that the, the, and just so, I'm clear, I'm not suggesting that applicants are gonna send their applications to us, applicants are gonna send their applications to you.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and as Ms. Basine was saying, that whether you're talking about us looking at five, or two, or sixty, the same commitment to confidentiality exists throughout the entire, throughout the entire process.
In the beginning, they're all, they're all confidential. Now, but again, I, I say this one more time, if you choose as a board, that you want to see those, all, all sixty of the people who applied, then we need to be able to tell them upfront, that your name will be given to the board, and if there's a request for freedom of information, and that has to be released, we need to tell them upfront.
If that's the case.
If that's the case, yes, sir.
And I'll be glad to take a look.
And what I'm, under those circumstances, if the, let's say hypothet, no, let's say it's, the opinion is that they will maintain confidentiality, then what you will get is the list of all the applicants, but you will also get what our recommendation is, in terms of, here's the applicants we think you should consider, right? 'Cause otherwise, you can get really bogged down in this process, as a board, really bogged down, right? And, and, and that's what we're here, that's what we're here to do, is to get the, the criteria that you want as a board, which we have to try to get through tonight.
We, we have to definitely...
And what the community wants, right? And match that to the applicants, so that you're gonna be getting that long list, but here's the short list that we think. And that's what we have to be here to help you do.
Okay, Ms. Camson?
Can I say something very quick? This is a, a thing that we don't have to decide this minute, and we have limited time, and we wanna get through all this information they need, so we can get posted. So, if it would be okay with everyone, if we could move on and get the rest of the information done, so that we're ready to finish this first part of the, uh, process, and then in the meantime, we could hold this and have a discussion with the board, so that we could make that decision in plenty of time.
I think those two issues, that and the issue over the stakeholders, meeting the finalists, those, those things you can decide upon later.
Yes, thank you very much, that way we can move on, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm gonna...
Ralph, if you'll go talk about the advertising...
I don't need to go through this, I mean, you should, you have it, so I'm not going to, uh, for the sake of time, but, um, the advertising venues, there are those that are at no cost, and there are those that do come with a considerable price tag. So, you have to let us know, uh, if you want us to proceed with the no-cost approach, which is through all the school board, um, associations, administrator associations, K-12 JobSpot, our website, or if you wanna add, EdWeek, um, District Admin, there's costs associated with that. You have to make a decision. Not tonight, I don't think you have to make that decision tonight.
Okay.
But, um, when we start advertising, we need to know, if you, the, the home office needs to know, if you want us to do, like, an education week ad.
So, in your email, when you discuss the timeline, can you give Ms. Tanner a hard date?
Right.
That we need to let you know?
That you would need to let us know, and then the cost breakdown?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yep, okay.
Okay?
All right.
And, and whether or not there's been great success, vice versa.
Right, okay. Okay, next, identify constituent groups for stakeholders input. We listed, in your agenda, we listed, uh, and this is just a list, it's, you know, there's nothing sacred, again, about this, but, of course, teachers, administrators, classified staff, PTA leaders, business leaders, faith-based leaders, students, obviously, government leaders, chamber of commerce, community members. We need, you need to determine which ones of those groups that you want us to have stakeholder meetings with, and then we'll set, uh, the dates, and then we'll set the agendas, the meeting times, to sit down with all of those, uh, at, at a place that you decide. Hopefully, there's a place large enough in this location, or at a school, or somewhere where we can meet with them. So, we need to know that, you may need to have some discussion about this, so, as, we don't, need to know it now, but we need to know it soon. Or, or if there's other, uh, others that we've not listed there, you're, that's up to you, but we need to know that.
Okay.
Okay? All right, we're gonna look at the characteristics, Ralph, if you wanna move to the board, and if you can get it back to the page, I don't know, it got changed. Oh, there she is, there's the wizard.
That my three. If ever one of you can pull out there.
Yeah, so, we, this is, uh, called a nominal group technique, we'll go through this very quickly. We want it to be correct, and we want it to be what you want it to be, but, uh, we're looking for five characteristics that, um, you want in the new superintendent, and we believe, uh, that the best way to do this is, is just tell us what the characteristic is. We don't, we don't necessarily need a backstory to it, or, or why you're saying this, what's the characteristic of a superintendent? And so, we're gonna start, uh, Dr. Gabriel, you wanna start with, you maybe, and I don't care which way we go, but go around, and give us your first characteristic that you have listed, and then we'll go back around and give us, you'll give us our second, and then your third. Along the way, if we get, if we're getting repetition, we'll go ahead and combine those into one. After we go through that, and get everybody on the board, then we'll make a determination After we go through that, and get everybody on the board, then we'll make a determination as to which are your top five, so, okay?
I'll, I'll start, and then we'll go around, then we'll.
Okay.
Mr. Clem, okay. Classroom and principal experience, that is, I put the word noteworthy, but it's just to say that my preference is that they've been in, there's years there, it's not just jumping around.
Right, classroom and administrative experience. Okay, Mr. Jordan?
I just, I wrote it as strong instructional leader.
Okay, is that the saying?
No.
Okay, strong instructional leader, the second one. Okay, Ms. Smith?
I said this earlier, proven results with closing the achievement gap.
Okay.
Working with a diverse group of students, personnel, things like that.
Closing the achievement gap, okay.
Where they have results.
Right. You got it.
And, and a district.
That's urban.
Actually, in this, actually, in this process.
Like, like, and not, and not for one year.
Actually, in this process, I didn't say it, there's supposed to be like one or two words, it's not supposed to be sentences.
Another.
We get it, we get it, we get it.
Proven results, closing the achievement gap.
Sure, I'll take that.
Ms. Martin?
Okay.
A strong and competent organizational leader.
Campson?
Tags on a little bit to Ms. Smith. Class level, school level, and/or district level, turnaround success must provide data. In other words, looking for someone that's turned around.
I know that.
Change agent.
There you go.
Thank you, change agent, good.
Go.
But I wanted to tie the turnaround, prove, proven turnaround success, and they must provide the data that shows me that. They can say it, but I want to see it.
Okay, next?
Well, similar, similarly, I have previous experience and success as superintendent in a district our size and composition, specifically in a school system, if they had a larger number of racially isolated schools, experience in some of the integration efforts.
Proven experience.
Yeah. Well, I think I'm, no, I don't, I don't want to limit it to proven experience.
Does it have to be in an urban?
I'm saying something different than just proven experience. Similar in, in size and composition with experience dealing with current issues of racially isolated schools and moving them to more socio-economically diverse schools.
Capture it? Mr. Clem? Proven experience in similar district size and demographics, anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, you didn't really get what she said.
Yeah. So, I, with a proven record of creating, I'm trying to put it in more simplistic terms.
Diversifying schools.
So, diversifying individual schools to have a more, to have more socio-economically balanced schools within a school district.
Experience with equating.
Yeah, that's, that's still different to me.
Creating diversity.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to put it.
I know this is not fair, I didn't say it in the beginning, but these are supposed to be like one word, two word, this is not a description.
I'll be, I'll be born blunt, how about tackling issues of school segregation in today's time, how about that?
Yep, and sometimes blunt's the way.
Sometimes blunt is simple, right?
For long-winded people.
Mr. Clem, three words or less.
So, I get the restriction. It's okay, but I could, I'll go with that one, though. District climate change agent.
Good, district climate change agent. All right, our second one, and please, if you would, try to narrow the.
Accountable.
There you go, that's a great one. Accountable. Mr. Jordan?
Strong record of governance. Counting my words. Strong governance skills, how about that? It's a hyphen.
Five words.
Ms. Smith, and I'm doing this for sake of time, because I said we had, I said we had to stop at four thirty, or five thirty. Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I'm trying to bring mine down to three words.
Y'all had a chance.
Experience. Creating a collaborative environment, it's a little more than three, but.
Okay.
If I'm a team builder.
Create collaborative environment. Yeah, collaborator, that's different, I want a collaborator.
Yeah.
Strong vision.
Vision, very good. Campson?
Intercity school experience.
I have strong vision with supporting strategic planning success.
Have strong vision. Can I add strategic planning? Yeah, I want to do that.
Yeah.
Okay with you, Ms. Martin, since that was yours?
Yep, that's the next step.
Yeah, that's what I head down to.
Hey, Ms. Clem?
Willing to, I know this might be out silent, but become a part of the community.
Community involvement.
Community involvement, strong community involvement.
Champion for students.
Track record of student interest over adult interest.
Wait a minute.
Could that be?
Student interest, champion first.
No, no, I, I don't want to put in three words, but I want somebody that's willing to even risk their employment of advocating for student interest over adult interest, so you can put it in whatever three words that are comfortable for you.
Good luck.
Student advocate. Here, Ms. Smith?
He had a suggestion. Or you could, you could prioritize student interest, you can say that, that helps.
Ooh, that's good.
And that's what she said. She said that.
Ask the student how to say it.
Over adults is critical.
Ms. Smith? Usually put that in two words, kids first.
Yeah, but over adult, yeah, I don't want it, I don't.
If you say that.
I don't want fluff, I want substance.
Okay, I get what you're saying.
I want demonstrated.
Yeah, demonstrated.
Urban experience as a superintendent. No, it says inner city, it said an inner city experience.
Where was she, inner city?
It said inner city experience.
Number thirteen?
But not as a superintendent.
So, could I just say, so that's urban?
Add that to.
Yeah, change it from inner city to urban.
You can keep inner city.
As a superintendent.
It doesn't say that, she didn't say that.
Okay.
Yeah, because I had said it earlier, but.
Um, a cheerleader.
Oh, you're so good with these quick words, I don't have any more.
That's just one word.
Like a minor standpoint, you mean, a.
Yeah, cheerleader for our, for our district.
A former cheerleader.
Yes.
Ms. Campson?
I'm passing, everything I've got on mine's up there.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just going to reiterate, demonstrated experience success as board coach and collaborator.
Board coach, then that gives you two words, board coach.
And that's what I was tying to.
Demonstrated success.
I know that would move us past it, but maybe I'd like to ask the two student reps here, is there anything that you think you might want to add to this list?
They have something.
Better lunch, anything?
Would you like us to say that?
I don't know, it's up to you.
Tell us how you really feel.
I think I agree with Mr. Jordan with that. Yeah, so, I would like to see a protester and an advocate, not just a cheerleader. But we want like an activist, like, that's really going to, we'll go to the schools and talk to the students and talk to the teachers.
Mm-hmm.
Not just.
Being present, so you want someone who's going to be present.
Who'll be there.
Visible.
We want someone who'll be present in the schools. I've said that, said visible.
So, students will actually know who the superintendent is, not just.
Visible's a great way to describe it.
Visible, I think, visible.
Okay, so we have nineteen here, do you see any that we can combine into one? Because we need to get down to five. Oh.
Strong vision.
Strong vision.
Strong, strong vision and strategic planning as one.
I feel like the racial, the racial thing is a really big issue.
Right here, number twelve.
But I see good strategic planning environment, so maybe we could circle that one.
You know.
Got to circle on strong vision.
Yeah, because if we're not.
So, which ones up there can we take off? Because we're running out of time, we may have to, we need more time for this.
Well, the one I submitted about collaborative, being collaborative, that can be combined with, um.
The stakeholder ones?
The stakeholders and community environment, that's, that's where I was going with that.
Right.
Bringing people together, inside and outside of the schools.
New color?
So, eleven and fourteen? Strong community involvement.
Those can be combined.
Tackling issues.
Collaborative?
Yes, because when I said that. Beaming towards internal and external stakeholders. Being able to bring those two groups together.
Both internal and external, yeah.
How about proven track record in?
If I could take this whole?
That's number six, right?
What about strong collaborative and community involvement?
Strong collaborative community involvement.
Where's the undo?
Collaborative community involvement.
I would rather. Where's the undo? Where's the undo?
While he's figuring that out, could we go on to the next one, like, how about a proven, a proven track record, proven results in school turnaround?
Yeah.
You know, that kind of stuff. Proven results.
If I, can I, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, three, six, seven, eight, um, and possibly the one that was erased. But one of the things that I had said related to six and seven was that proven, demonstrated success as a superintendent in a district, which I think ties into thirteen as well, I couldn't see that. In a district with our size, demographics, that's, that has tackled issues around school segregation.
One, three.
Yeah. But I think previous experience as a superintendent with a demonstrated experience.
What if we find someone that's been like a deputy or not a, so we absolutely draw the line and says they have to have been a superintendent?
I would prefer that.
I would prefer it, yeah. We can say preferred.
Wait a minute, are you, are you going to agree with preferred now?
It's not that I didn't agree with preferred for that particular position, but for superintendent, I think it's.
So, demonstrated previous experience with success as a superintendent in an urban district?
Well, I would, I would say school, our size, and.
Similar, comparable.
Comparable to our district.
Comparable, comparable, thank you.
But, but do we want to keep the word superintendent in there? Yes.
That's the question I was asking.
I, I, I don't, I, I don't have to have it in there, that's not, but I'm asking you all. Yes.
I do.
Don't put it in your job description.
You feel like it is a, it is pretty strong that you want someone who's already been a superintendent.
So, we can do superintendent experience preferred.
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel strongly about it, but.
Ms. Campson?
Either one.
Okay.
Ms. Ruthen?
I, I agree with superintendent preferred.
Result was proven, result.
Yeah, superintendent experience.
And they have to have the certification. If you get hired.
I mean, you got to have the certification of Commonwealth of Virginia anywhere, the license.
You know, done it. No, 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 but I'm just saying. Right.
But I think I demonstrate, if you're going to demonstrate that you've had success in that position, that's what I think is really important.
Yeah, we've had some.
So, a license or certification isn't.
Is more important than the title, or is the title more important than the experience? To me, it's the experience.
If you've had superintendent experience.
No, it's the, the, turning a district around and having that experience of being a part of that.
Yeah, I think.
Is that more important, or do you want them to have the title of superintendent?
I want them to have that experience.
Experience, experience, not just title.
Not just title, and, and.
Being a part of it isn't the same as actually leading it.
Right, that's why I'm saying superintendent and, not work.
Let's, um, so, the first item, we're trying to get it to five, the first item that we have, I just want to make sure we're all in consensus here, the first item was, um, the vision, strong vision, um, gosh, shoot, did you write it down, Ms. Campson?
I'm writing it down now.
I would change it to clear vision. I mean, okay.
All right, clear, I'm fine with it. Clear vision.
Clear vision and strategic planning.
Yeah.
Are we all good with that? That's one of the five. Clear vision and strategic planning.
Okay.
How does that translate to what we have up here?
It's, it takes into consideration, um, strategic planning, vision, uh, strategic planning was one of mine, I'm asking, do we have consensus on that?
Well, for now, let's see, I mean, we end up, we go.
Trying to get to five.
Right, the next one I have is strong collaborative community involvement.
Okay.
Which combined, I, two or three of those.
Could that just go, when we say community involvement, could we just say internal, external, something? Because I know that Christine, you had one that kind of grabbed both of them, because you want a collaboration and involvement, both internally and externally.
Yeah.
And that might be able to combine it into one of the fives.
I thought that's what we were doing on the last one.
What did you just say?
Collaborative community involvement, internal and external stakeholders?
Yeah, because our community is the school district.
You just say all stakeholders.
All stakeholders. Okay.
But I think organizational leader is.
I think that's.
Absolutely.
I'm with you. Organizing.
I mean, I think, you know, instructional experience, yes, but like, they're really going to be the leader of a huge organization, and need to be able to manage that.
They need, that's what. Visionary, change agent, organizational leader.
I mean, a turnaround organizational leader. It's on the list, but I don't. Three to five. That's from, that's my opinion, obviously. A turnaround organizational leader? I mean, I always think of change agent in every way, like.
I like change agent, proven.
I think that change.
Proven to me that you're a change agent.
When we, superintendents, I would assume know what we mean when we say change agent.
Yes.
Um, but I also don't want it to be, um, to, for, for.
Experience change agent.
You know, some, a community member's going to be like, oh, you want someone to come in there and just like, you know, like, throw everything out and bring something in. You know, we want that, we don't want that, we want someone who is, um. Willing to take risks, is what I think.
Risk taker.
When it's needed.
I had of adults' interests.
Make the main thing the main thing, right, Ms. Campson?
Yes, yes, make the main thing the main thing. Which right now is turnaround.
Okay, so I would say turnaround, because that's what our division needs right now. So, I would say a turnaround.
I have change agent with proven results and turnaround.
But we, what about the organizational leader?
Well, organization is not, it can be.
But an organizational leader with clear vision.
If you have a clear vision and strategic planning, I, I think assistants think are organizational leader. I think that a strong organizational leader has a strategic, you know, is involved in.
We're narrowing it down, so let's, let's just put on there right now, you said a change agent?
A change agent for? I said change agent with proven results and turnaround. But I, I don't like the way that ends, turnaround sounds too nebulous there.
I mean, whatever, I don't think everything needs to be turnaround, but like, just to get us on the right path, you know, multiple paths, but like.
But we need proven results with that. You can say you're a change agent, but are you really? Prove it to me, show me your, show me your.
Now, a couple of things, a couple of things that came up was urban.
Yeah, we need to say something about that. Yeah, we need to say something about that.
Oh, yes, yes, ladies. So basically, we were thinking that. Here, I got a mic.
You got you.
No, it's red, it's red, so it's, right, it's hot.
So uh we were saying that um it would be a good idea to have a dedicated student act, like activist or advocate, because we have a voice, we are the voice for the students, but we don't really have the um the power or the vote to affect the change, so having a superintendent that's really willing to do that for the students, I think, is important too.
And who is also able to connect to the students.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that, right, so, so we can put that, we, we have on there kids first, we, we said student champion, and we said adult, student interest over adult interest, so how would you guys frame that? Student advocate? Student advocate. That's how I would frame it. I mean, you're a stakeholder, you're, I mean, you're.
Have to get the piece in about students, yeah.
Yeah.
The student advocate.
And also what, also what Ms. Miss said about um.
Student advocate?
How about advocate for students?
Advocate for students.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And also what Ms. Miss said about the closing the achievement gap, I think is a really big um thing that we should focus on too, and the segregation, the school segregation.
Basine brought up, I really agree with the student segregation comment, and I think that should be a priority.
I feel like that's what the students and the district needs, like, most right now.
And I, I feel very strongly about that, as being up there.
Okay, so to, to me, in, in, in my mind, and when we, when we talk about achievement gaps and things like that, that gets that turnaround, because you can't turn a division.
Oh, I don't really have a problem with using the words achievement gap myself, because as we know, that is the US Department of Education's focus.
It's a focus because.
Department of Education's focus, it needs to be Norfolk Public Schools' focus, and I think we're making it a focus now by, you know, pulling it out as an individual priority, and I mean, it's, it's a big deal right now.
I wanna say.
If you close achievement gaps, you do turn the district around, and it will turn the district around.
Right, okay.
Well said.
So then commitment to closing achievement gaps.
Thank you.
Commitment to closing achievement gaps.
Anything can turn around, like turn around a budget, but if we specify.
Yeah.
I should ask the consultants, uh.
Yeah, I do, ability to.
So, so when I, when I think of qualifications, uh, and we talk about what's preferred and what's required, those are kinda like the five or seven things I think of in terms of qualifications. Do you have to be a PhD, is being a principal preferred or required?
That's right.
Do you have to have previous experience? That's what I think those are. Then there are various characteristics that we can spell out that align with our uh community beliefs, our accountability plan, where you can get into more uh illustrative language around commitment to advocacy and uh staff relationships, and so I'm just trying to stand through this process. Uh are you working to drive us to what we want that is required and preferred, or are you trying to get more than that out of us? Cuz I think all this is good work, but I see these as additional characteristics that kinda align with the board and the community's beliefs versus uh do you need to have a, an experience as a superintendent before, preferred or required? Do you have to have a PhD, preferred or required? Do you have to be a principal before, preferred or required? Those, to me, are different qualifications than these other characteristics that we also want this city in the first. Right, right, and so different boards handle it differently, they, you know, we've had boards who have said, we want, they define it in one word, leadership, we want leadership, and that's what they put, we want leadership. And then we have those like you who've said, we want an organizational leader who does these things, so that's really up to you to define, and obviously, it's taken a lot longer time than we thought it would, cuz normally what we would do.
They didn't know this board.
Well, it's our first time having a discussion. Oh, it's fine, no, and it's fine, I, I've got, I've got time, but I know you don't, that's what I'm concerned about.
I want that, I want holds themselves accountable up here, accountability.
Accountability is a good, is another one that people put. My, my other point is, you, you took us through this round robin, and we had things in the round robin.
Yep.
We no longer have the round robin in front of us, and it seems like we are.
Which accountability was on there?
I'm just trying.
Accountability was on that.
It was on there, it was on there, he's not, he's not saying that though.
I'm just talking about the process.
Other stuff to look at it to kinda.
That's technology.
To merge, yeah.
Technology, it went away.
Oh, I need to see it again.
Yeah.
The first list went away?
No, it's still there.
No, it's there, it's there.
Isn't it on a different page?
Yeah, sometimes it's just.
We have, we have two pages set up.
Sometimes it's just helpful to see an example, right, from the.
At the top, look up. Can we put?
There it is. There it is.
Can we put accountability up there, accountable?
So.
Oh, I put accountability up there.
So normally what happens with this is we will go, and we'll let you go up, and you will put
Number nine's accountable.
a mark by the one that you thinks number one, okay, whatever that is, everybody put their number one.
But what about our combination?
But we were trying, that's where we were trying to get to, get it combined to a point where we could do that, but.
But, but the combination kinda lost the identity of the multiple characteristics that were there.
I get it, I get it, yeah.
I think Mr. Jordan made a really good point, is that, like, can we start with something that we could probably at least nail down, is what education level, previous experience, can we just, at, just at that point, agree on what it is that we're looking for?
Well, I agree with that, and that's why when I shared my item, I said principal experience.
Oh, principal experience, yes, I thought you were asking me superintendent experience.
So, so I think.
It definitely should be a principal.
Then um if you can kind of, kinda corral us together, so number one, I think we need to first identify, oh, do we wanna say superintendent experience preferred, or is that a non-negotiable?
On mine, I had principal preferred, oh, I had principal, non-negotiable, superintendent preferred.
Okay.
That's how mine was.
Ms. Basine?
Um superintendent, non-negotiable.
Superintendent, non-negotiable, can you just keep track of this if you don't mind? You got it, okay, Ms. Martin?
I guess I have to.
Preferred?
Superintendent, non-negotiable.
Non-negotiable.
What about principal, though?
That doesn't have to be a.
We're doing, we're doing one at a time, or we're doing both?
No, you can do them both, they did it both.
I didn't.
Think that superintendent required, principal preferred.
Okay, I am superintendent preferred, principal required. Okay, so for superintendent preferred, um principal.
Required.
Required. That's where we're at.
My caveat on that is that you may have a district superintendent, we've had some people with that, that isn't just a entire district, or division superintendent or something like that.
I'm also.
Someone who's in the pipeline, that has showed demonstration, demonstrated ability, but they may not have been the person driving the scene.
I would discourage you from saying superintendent experience required, I would say preferred, I, I didn't, I didn't keep up with that.
Okay, that's what we, that's what we landed on.
No, was superintendent experience preferred?
Yep.
Principal experience.
Required.
Do you wanna add to that in a similar, which was one of the bullets?
Yes.
A similar district with.
Ooh, comparable.
Comparable district with size.
Yes, composition, yes, demographics.
Demographic.
Yeah, that's what I said earlier.
That does combine a lot of them.
Yes.
That has dealt with issues of school.
This is her meeting, so.
All right, while he's working, you wanna start the next one?
Hand up, yes.
Well, my question is to you, so from your, from your wealth of experience um and knowledge of research, do you find that uh principal experience strongly correlates with success as superintendent?
Yes.
Yes?
Absolutely.
How could it not?
I just.
And that's just my opinion, your opinion's great too, sorry.
There are successful superintendents who have not had principal experience.
So we have four up there already, right?
I've seen them all the time.
I was just, he was sharing his opinion, I asked for.
He thinks important.
We don't have the student, we don't have the student item on there, and so we need to put that up there.
I thought we did, strong, strong collaborative.
No?
I, I combined it with this, an educational leader with a proven track record of closing the achievement gap, with an emphasis on student needs first.
Um, student needs first, um.
Above all, I mean, in terms, that takes care, I mean, you're not talking about, I get what you're saying, we're gonna put students above adults.
Mm-hmm.
Politics. Politics, everything else, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cuz that's what schools are built for.
So let's, let's read out, let's read out what we have right now, if you could take us through it, Dr. um.
Perry.
I thought I was forgetful.
Carol.
So the, the, the four that I saw far is, an organizational leader with a clear vision like put, not just with strategic planning, but with successful strategic planning.
Oh, yeah, I like that.
With successful.
There should be evidence that you not only developed a strategic plan right, but that you implemented it successfully, that's critical. We can have the most beautiful strategic plan in the world.
That's right.
Exactly.
That's right, we wanna die.
Second, a strong collaborative leader who values community involvement with all stakeholders.
Yes.
That took that collaboration piece, the community involvement, um, I would even say.
Visionary?
Visible.
Visible, strong visible, yeah, there you go.
Collaborative leader who values community involvement with all stakeholders, and is committed to the community. That takes like four or five of them from the bullets, all in one.
Let's go. Strong, visible, collaborative leader.
An educational leader with a proven record of closing achievement gap, with an emphasis on student needs first. And I, I guess we can massage it out a little bit to dr- to meet your, your need, a superintendent experience preferred, building principal experience required, in a similar district relative to urban size and demographics, right? And I think there's one that you're missing up here that, that was put through all of them, and that's the whole, whole issue of equity.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, and um.
School segregation.
Equity and diversity.
Can we um.
Uh, an educational leader who, who has proven, a proven record of addressing uh student equity and.
School segregation.
School equity, school segregation, and diversity.
Oh.
I think those words could be inclusive of your number three if we wanted to.
Yeah.
I think what's missing is uh board superintendent relationships and governance.
Okay, I can include, we can include equity.
And all that, I don't think.
Um, segregation.
And athletics of closing achievement.
Right.
I'm just saying, wanna, I think that what you have is more powerful than that.
What was it, what was the third one, equity segregation? I think that's right. And then the fifth, something about board governance, right?
Yeah, I agree.
Board relations.
Yes, I, I agree with that, yeah.
Yeah, we need.
Has established, has established a, a record of development of.
Relations, board relationships and coaches.
Positive board.
Developing peak performing governance teams, how about that?
Ooh.
Say that again?
That sounds good.
What'd I just say?
Peak performing governance teams.
Performance governance teams, that's better.
Yeah, I like that part.
It's just governance.
I mean, it's just good board govern, yeah.
Successful governance.
I would say.
But really, like, board coach, like.
We have um, our students are gonna move for a second.
If Charity and I can just add in, we actually think the fifth point should be student advocacy, it is such a big commitment that there's so much that goes into it, there's so much getting to know the students, first of all, speaking to them, finding out what do you think we can improve on in the city with the schools? It is such a big commitment, and to me, and also to Charity, that's their number one job, is to stand up and speak for the students, and do anything they can to improve the school system, so we think that the student advocacy should be the fifth and final point um in the list.
Can we add the student advocacy, advocacy, advocacy piece to this one?
We think it should be standing on its own.
Yeah, but we still, we do, I think the relationship with the board has to be on its own, it can be in there with.
So, what I hear, student advocacy, and you know, hearing your needs, your concerns as a student, and the building each and every day, um, when we look at three, because you're gonna get five.
Yes.
Um, but when we look at three, if we're addressing through our equity, making sure that, you know, I'm quite sure you hear the student, you know, whether or not you've got books, or, you know, certain things like that, if your school looks like another school across the division, or you have the necessary teachers that are in there. But also hearing your concerns of kinda barriers that are putting you, your way, um, I'm quite sure you hear about students and about bullying and all those other things, but if we can put all of those things in three, cuz we only got five spots, that we can address them, and we have a leader that's gonna address them, because we can't just take it in the respect of just the, the students, which is great, but then we also have the staff that's in there, so you have to balance all of that to make sure that we're making sure that everybody's being met.
Right.
So can we, can we look at that?
We can add six and put student and teacher advocacy in relation.
Let's do that, let's add six.
If that makes everybody happy, we'll squeeze the font down on the brochure and.
You can, you can add, and must have good eyes to.
So, and I, Dr. Gabriel, you, you, you're doing a great job leading this, but we really need to, is everybody, do we have consensus with this, is this what you want it to say?
Yes.
Sometimes, let me just read them again, so everybody feels comfortable with the say, okay? So, the criteria that we've come up with here is a proven organizational leader with a clear vision with successful strategic planning.
Yeah, that one sounds good.
We all know what that means, which is articulated. Two, a strong, visible, collaborative leader who values community involvement with all stakeholders and is committed to the community, that was important. Just combine three or four of them. Three, an educational leader with a proven record of closing the achievement gap with the, with an emphasis on student needs first, and here I'll include equity and um that piece on segregation, right, school segregation. Four, superintendent experience preferred, building principal experience required, in a similar dis- similar district, urban size and demographics, demonstrated success in board governance and board relationships, and a student and teacher advocate.
On this last one, can we, can we um modify that to say faculty and staff instead of just teacher?
Student. Faculty. Cuz there should be an ad for all.
Yeah.
So the first one, a proven organizational leader with a clear vision and.
And demonstrated success. I'm gonna have to write that a little, it won't come out like that.
All right, we're five minutes up from my extra allotted time here.
Can we print this, or do we need to take a picture of it?
I took a picture, and Megan says we can.
We can save it, we'll save it up here.
What I could do is take it back and.
Yeah, you'll make it pretty.
Yep, well, what we'll do is clean it up, send it back to you, make sure it's what you want it to say, and then we'll go. I think, I think this has to be a little stronger in terms of the student piece down here, I'm not so sure, like, student needs first. This kind of process is hard, hard, and, and I, we need more time to, I apologize for that.
Can you just remind us, then, you take this and the next step, you're gonna take this and do what with it?
It goes to the, it goes to the brochure, it's part of the ad that says that your school district is looking for this, you know, in the candidates.
So then what, what is the uh, the stakeholder input for? If the stakeholder input isn't helping to form this, what does it help form?
It gives them a voice, so we'll, we'll compile that and give it to you, so you get to the interview part, you know what the community. It's just for you.
Us, we're interviewing.
Yeah, for you to read through and go, oh.
It's selection.
I thought this, but the community thinks this one. I mean, example out there, right, if, when we do the stakeholder input, right, and they're, and what they say are not in even the same room as these, then that's something that's telling you in terms of a disconnect, but that's information for you.
Will, will we receive a copy of the ad before it goes live?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we can, you can review that, yeah, and I think that's in the, in the brochure, I mean, in the packet, it says you will review before we send that out.
So at this point, Dr. Carol, is there anything else, I know you listed some things you needed to walk out the door with today.
I did.
Uh, what else is it that we need to have you ready to walk out the door with?
Yes, ma'am, I think we're finished, uh, actually, uh, oh, that's not true, we got the point, uh, the district point of contact, we got that, we're, we're working on the brochure, the list of names to be invited to the community input meetings, if that's by special invitation, of course, we got the board list, we already have that, and then reviews, the brochure for print, that is on here, before, that goes out, before that's advertised, you will be able to review that. The only thing that's missing is a, is the compensation parameters, you wanna hit on that really quickly, what you found?
And so, so you're still looking for feedback from us, I have Mark, on the stakeholders, the list of stakeholders, you still need that back, you need to get an answer on the confidentiality piece.
Yes.
And then you need to get an an, you don't, and also I have another one asterisk that is that you wanted to know if there are any additional advertising we wanna buy.
That's correct.
And we can do that and get that to you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, I, I've, the compensation piece, I can only be straightforward with you. I found, through doing Google searches and looking at other communities and school districts in the area, and I found the range being anywhere in the neighborhood of 240 to 260.
Who's getting 260?
I, I don't know if that's realistic in terms of what you, you saw, but I looked at Norfolk and Fredericksburg and Richmond and Newport News and all in the area here. And that seems to be the ballpark compensation package. Um, and then, of course, something that you would have to decide later on as a board, or all the other things, I'm gonna go through that, but like contributions to a tax-deferred annuity, car allowance, bonuses based on performance, it's all, uh, moving expenses, it's all in there.
And that just made me think about this, and, um, for someone who's been around here, Rodney Noel, we have a requirement that the person has to live in Norfolk as well, right?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. It can be in the contract, you just put that in the contract.
Well, we, yeah, we put that.
Dr. Ferry, with those salaries, were you looking at, were they the starting salary for that superintendent? Or has that superintendent been there 10 years?
Some of them have been there pretty, well, not very, obviously, they're not there very long, a lot of these people be- but, um, I couldn't specifically tell you who was there and what length of time.
Yeah, because, you know, if you've been there a few years, five or 10 years, you've accumulated a much longer salary than we would have incoming.
Yeah, I went by the most current, um, newspaper articles I read in terms of the compensation being reported. But obviously, that might be somebody who's been there three, four years, five years. One was there about 10 years.
Yeah, it makes a big difference.
It does make a difference. So, that's something that you'll have to consider as well.
Yeah, cause when we bring in like a new principal, they start, they don't start up here.
Right, right.
Where the top principal's earning, yeah.
You wanna start with a range and tell me what that range is?
Yeah, I think we could do that, I think.
What, you're telling me you need that now?
To advertise.
Would like to have that, I mean, I'd like to nail that down if we could.
Sure.
To your own mic.
So, um, and I, and I guess I would lean on some of our, um, who've been here a little bit longer. I mean, our, our last superintendent for entry coming in, does anybody remember what that range was?
We know what she left at, but what did she come at? I mean, she'd been here like, she'd gotten like-
I don't know why, I'm thinking 230 to 260 maybe.
24?
Yeah.
So, what if we said like 230 to 260 as a range? Cause I mean, Mr. Billups always reminds us that it's a range, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, he does, yes, he does.
That's negotiated with the board as a superintendent, once you're, and, you know, and we're just trying to give them a, basically a ballpark. Based upon what I saw in terms of the region, if you, if you went 230 to 260, that's not going to push anybody away from applying. I don't know.
I like that better than the 240.
Are, are we comfortable with that? Because what we, what we ballpark is-
We need everybody to be comfortable.
That's our final decision once it comes back.
I'm okay with it.
Bazin? Yeah, yes, yes, okay. Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan? I'm fine with that then. So, we're gonna say 230 to 260.
Okay.
Okay.
Plus, you know, plus benefits.
Well, plus the, yes, we understand, help and all that other stuff.
That's just simply salary range. Okay, do you wanna take any more questions? I mean, do you want us to build any more questions, or do you need to move to your next?
No, um, we are, we are pressed for time at this moment, but we do appreciate you walking the board and our student reps through this, through this very important, um, part of the process. Um, and, uh, Ms. Campson has, uh, great notes, Ms. Tener has great notes as far as the takeaways that we need to follow up with you on and what you need to follow back with us on.
Right.
So, I think that's it.
I, I wanna just clarify one more thing about the stakeholder input piece with the finalists. I didn't, I didn't wanna, um, at all imply that the stakeholders are interviewing the candidates. That's their only advisory, that's all they are. They're, they're, they're just providing input back to you. So, when you consider that piece-
Is there a limit on the number we should provide? So, so we can, the more, the merrier?
Number of- When we have the initial stakeholder. Stakeholder groups or stakeholders?
Stakeholders that will be in the groups.
Well, some, no, I mean, that's up to you. You can limit, you can, you can have by invitation only groups, which might be government officials or something. You can have community, which could be in a large auditorium with invite everybody in the whole city, and- In my experience is that it's, if somebody is burning to wanna get into one of those stakeholder groups, it's always wise to permit them to.
Yeah.
Oh, I agree.
We don't wanna exclude anyone.
It should be an inclusive process.
This is everybody's superintendent.
So, if there are more people there, this way you're, you're being seen as inclusive.
Well, we can do probably five or six stakeholder groups a day, you know, we can do-
So, we could get a lot through there, and at different times, so some in the evenings when people can't come in the daytime.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, we, we look forward to the follow-up.
There'll be a lot of follow-up.
Yep.
It's a long process.
Yes, um, safe travels back.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
I'm gonna dinner. You could get it here, or you can go out to a nice restaurant.
Let me thank you so much for, uh, the time tonight, and we look forward to working with you both.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's great to see your students here, they're awesome.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna be-
They're our student members of the board.
They are terrific. All right, okay, um, well, thank you, everyone. We definitely went over, um, but what we'd like to do right now is have a motion to enter into closed session.
Make a motion, I move to go into closed session.
Second, hold on a second, Ms. Tanner has to.
No, I, I need to make an announcement before the motions.
Okay.
I've made a change to the motion. Uh, the change is on board docs, but probably many of you haven't seen it uh, cause it was made after the beginning of the meeting. And I, I can read you the change, but it also should be reflected on board docs. In subsection A of the motion, which will make reference to, uh, the personnel exemption, I've deleted the last sentence that read, "The subject of this portion of the session concerns the personnel agenda of this date and discussion of a specific person providing services to students within the Norfolk Public Schools." The reason for that is that, uh, after the start of the meeting, I was notified by Mr. Pishko that the newspaper objected to the last part of that sentence about, uh, discussion of a specific person providing services to students. They felt that, their attorney felt that it didn't fall under the, uh, personnel exemption. And while not agreeing with them on that argument, we went ahead and, uh, deleted it because it's really just redundant. Everything I need to discuss, uh, I've included under subsection C, the, uh, the legal matters portion. Um, and so, when the, the motion's read, and the motion you'll be voting on will not include that language.
Oh, that's okay.
If anybody has any questions, I'll, uh, to answer them.
And so, Mr. Cloud, the, um, motion that Ms. Tanner's gonna read is the corrected version.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. So, um, we had a motion to enter into closed session. Ms. Martin made the motion, and Ms. Campson, did you second it, or was it Ms. Smith?
I did.
Okay, Ms. Smith, uh, seconded the motion. And, um, is there further discussion? Ms. Bazin?
Um, so, is an item still being discussed?
Uh, there's no, the item that's under the personnel exemption will not be discussed. I will be discussing, uh, what is in the, uh, in the legal portion of the motion, including responding to the FOIA.
Okay. And has any board member made any declarations?
No, I, I, I'll be glad to address that if you want. Uh, Ms. Bazin, I think you had an objection to Dr. Gabriel participating in discussions, is that correct?
Correct. In that portion of the discussion.
I understand. Uh, and-
I raised a question regarding board members' disclosure.
Well, the, well, the, the issue is under the conflict of interest act, whether a board member, in this case, Dr. Gabriel, but at, at any time, uh, there's always a question whether a board member has a personal interest as that is defined in the act, in a transaction, as that is defined in the act. Uh, if they do, then potentially, they cannot participate in discussions or vote on the transaction or, or, but there are various exceptions that apply. Uh, however, in, in this case, it's my opinion that there is no conflict for Dr. Gabriel uh, to participate in the executive session discussions that, uh, are reflected in the motion.
That being said, go ahead and call the board.
Move that members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2 dash 3.711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for, A, discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection one of the above cited code. B, discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record pursuant to subsection two of the above cited code section. The subjects of this portion of the session, session is the student support services agenda of this date and the consideration of the funding and awarding of scholarships to, to specific students. And C, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to specific legal matters